Alright. Welcome back, so we're studying for the intro IT objective assessment. Okay, so. An IT system involves three components hardware, software and people. So information technology is technology used to create, maintain and make information accessible using systems for information storage, retrieval and exchange. So IT is a technology that's used to create, maintain and make information accessible using systems for information storage, retrieval and exchange. And it focuses on the technologies needed to develop, maintain and use computer systems, software and networks that support the storage software, the storage processing and distribution of information. So really making information accessible and providing the ability to retrieve, restore or make or exchange, okay, I'm sorry, so make so retrieve, restore or exchange information, but making the information accessible in order to retrieve it, restore it or exchange it. And it makes the information accessible by using systems for information storage that allow you to retrieve, restore or exchange information, okay. So same thing, the IT computer systems, the software and the networks support the storage, processing and distribution of information, so. Storage, processing and distribution of information, but also using systems that support the information storage, retrieval and exchange of information process. Okay. So. Systems are collections of elements that interact to achieve a common goal, so systems are a collection of elements that interact to achieve a common goal. And IT as a system includes hardware, software and networks. So intro to IT is relatively, in the beginning anyway, it's relatively easy because it just kind of goes through what information technology actually consists of, which is technology used to create, maintain and make information accessible using systems of information storage that can retrieve, restore or exchange information. So the functions within the organization, we have user support, so user support provides support to the users and by analyzing the needs and issues and then identifying and implementing solutions, so. IT support may be help desk, data and information management. Building systems to enable storage, retrieval, analysis and use of organization data and information with an eye on disaster recovery and business continuity. And that kind of they go into disaster recovery and business continuity. Okay, so yeah, they review that in section eight, you're welcome honey, they review that in section eight, so networks, they support the communication between the elements of an IT system. Networking technologies rely on hardware and software to connect computer systems and data repos. So networks, networks help connect elements of the IT system. So next section is systems integration, so about IT infrastructure. Um, so essentially the different systems used by an organization, they often need to work together to retrieve data from each other. And with new systems with system integrations, when the system is introduced or updated, it needs to work seamlessly with the other elements of within the infrastructure, so. For example, when I worked as a support engineer, um, that integrating was part of our um, two week sprints with actually being able to make sure that the new code that was being deployed was properly integrated and so we would run them through lower environments and test environments first to make sure that everything was integrated properly within to the infrastructure, so systems integration. And yeah, so deployment of systems requires setting up and configuring the product to align with business needs, i.e. the requirements. And then IT ensures that a new product integrates into existing infrastructure. So the core components of IT software, so, okay. So for the core components of IT software, for software developments, it's software systems implementing algorithms that transform data from one to the other. And then identifying and implementing systems that help the organization perform tasks more effectively. So that's the core components of software development. And then business analysis, it's organizations analyzing their processes and then assessing current and anticipated needs. So that falls under the business analysis, but also like the yeah, I guess any type of business, yeah, business analyst or any sort of business role would fall under like future proofing the business by way of data. So analyzing processes and then assessing current and future needs of the business based on the data and then seeing where the technology can fill those gaps um, of business needs. Let me know if you have any clarification on that, on business analysis organizations, yeah. Drop some, drop some, drop some comments, drop some suggestions in the comments too. Um, just so that way, if anybody else is working on this class, they can, um, yeah, they can go, you know, they can get some help and we can all help each other through these classes and assessments. Excuse me, um. Okay, so then the business of IT is web development, so it starts with web development, so. Okay, so within web development, websites are classified as intranet, internet or extranet. The internet um refers to um a system that is available to all of the public. The intranet refers to a system that is only available within an organization, so. If you are at work and you have like those special websites that only employees can access and you can only see maybe when you're logged in with your work user uh logins, that would be an intranet and then an extranet, I believe, let me see, and then an extranet, it says makes resources available within an organization, but it also makes that information available to other specific organizations or users, so. Such as contractors or consultants, so yeah, I guess like that that can be characterized as um when maybe, yeah, cause like I know there was one time I was contracting and they gave me access to to their CMS and kind of, yeah, they gave me access to kind of their intranet, but not everything, I didn't have access to everything that the employees had access to, so still a little bit restricted, but not fully available to the public, but also less, less availability to me as a contractor versus a full-time employee. So that would be considered an extranet. And then within business intelligence, the organizations are creating and gathering large quantities of data. When, when organized and analyzed, the data can tell compelling stories. So same thing where the other position with business analysis where they're analyzing and assessing for current and future trends that they can, um, that they can take advantage of using technology that was a business analyst. Um, so business intelligence is organizing organizations, creating and gathering large quantities of data and when they are organized and analyzed, the data is telling compelling stories about the current state of the organization, so. Same thing with these business, these business roles, I feel like they focus on really analyzing that data and prophesizing current and future trends within the business and then right getting the current state of the business as far as competitors and profits and whatever else they're gauging. And then systems and personnel supporting data analytics use the org's data to determine its past performance, yep. Identify the reasons behind past and current issues and forecast future performance, so exactly what, what I was just saying, which is that it's forecasting these, it's determining current trends and then forecasting future trends to make sure that they are essentially ahead of the curve in terms of what might be happening in the market across their competitors and maybe their particular, um, you know, customer base in whatever field. And effective models allow organizations to predict sales volume, reveal trends and provide insights into new markets, okay. So the project management, so the project management is the maintenance of an organization's IT infrastructure, including various projects to ensure continuous functionality and implementing improvement or technology changes within the organizational IT strategy. So essentially, um, the maintenance of an organization's IT infrastructure can include various projects and the project management um, in IT would be responsible for managing all of these technology related products, I'm sorry, these technology related projects, um, cause likely they would be, they would revolve around implementing technological changes that would support the business um and bring improvement to the organization, so. Okay. Okay, so now it goes into the section of IT as a discipline and the first one, which is the computing, the computing discipline, so. Computing essentially is any activity that uses a computer to manage, process or share information. Okay, so anything, so any activity that uses, that uses a computer to manage processes or share information is considered computing. And five of the most commonly recognized computing disciplines are computer engineering, computer science, software engineering, information technology and information systems, so. Computer engineering is rooted in applied practical principles, which means that it's focusing on the design of hardware systems and the software that makes them work. So essentially, it's focusing on the infrastructure and the software that makes them work and then any supporting technology within that infrastructure. So it addresses the development of solutions that use computers. Okay, so, okay, 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 wait, okay, so I think I'm just trying to figure out like I'm trying to because I feel like whenever I create an example for something, it just helps me better understand it and I'll be able to remember it easier and be like and relate it back if I have an example to go with the topic that I'm learning, so. It says that the computer engineering addresses the development of solutions that use computers and other devices, so i.e. self-driving cars, alarms, smart watches. So same thing, okay, okay, so designing hardware systems like alarm clocks and smart watches, but then also determining the software that might make them work, so. Being able to design a radio that has Bluetooth capability or right, or being able to design smart watches, right, being able to design watches that can connect to your phone or that you can make phone calls on like the, like the Apple watch, so. Computer engineering addresses the development of those type of solutions, so that computer engineering is basically focusing on designing hardware um and the software that can be implemented into them to make them work, so examples of that would be smart watches, would be alarms, would be any device that with technology it's able to either work better or it's able to work period. So yeah, because the examples given, so even like refrigerators, like. Yeah, like I guess, right, even refrigerators where it's like, okay, you can implement software into them to kind of program them, program them to do certain things, but then also implement hardware into it, yeah, so hard, so basically having the hardware and software work together to have, um. This device operate, I don't know, I, I, I think, I, I think I got it, I think I got it, I think I got it. I'm gonna come back to that to form, to formulate an example, but also if you have an example, feel free to share. Um, so computer science. This one is rooted in theoretical principles, so this addresses the design and implementation of software, emphasizing solving computing problems and creating new ways to use computers, so. Examples of computer science would be robotics, AI algorithm, so essentially like computer science is strictly technology, whereas computer engineering is implementing technology into existing types of hardware or implementing technology into different, into different, um, yeah, essentially, I guess, right, like into different aspects of things that already exist where implementing technology into them. Okay. Yeah, because computer science is essentially things that have already, or yeah, cause computer science is more so like, I feel like it's, it's things that have already emerged from technology, whereas computer engineering, these hardware, these uh, these devices may have already existed, but now they're trying to implement an engineer, um, an engineer techno, you know, technological abilities into this device, these hard, these hardware devices. And computer science is already existing technology, so algorithms, robotics, AR, augmented reality, AI, artificial intelligence, rooted in theoretical principles, whereas computer engineering is rooted in applied practical principles. So even in that regard, right, you're thinking another way that I'm thinking about this is that computer engineering, even when it talks about rooted in, in applied and practical principles, it makes sense because when you're engineering stuff, you're actually having to put things together and because this is an applied practical, you're thinking these are physical things that had already existed. So these are physical things that are already existing like alarms and refrigerators and, 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 um, and cars and watches that they're now implementing technology into them, whereas theoretical, the theory says that you are, um, you're assuming or you're, you're theorizing something before implementing and actually putting it into action, so i.e. robotics, AR, AI algorithms where you know, maybe you're having to um, tinker around with code and programming to get your solution. With computer engineering, you're actually having to apply, you're actually having to physically apply that solution versus theorizing the solution, so computer engineering is applying the solution and computer science is theorizing the solution, so one is rooted in applied practical principles, which is computer engineering and the computer science is rooted in theoretical principles. I hope you understand, I get it in my head, but I hope you get what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to. Um, and then software engineering is focusing on development and maintenance of reliable and efficient software systems, okay. So. Information systems focused on organizational issues, okay. That is likewise rooted in practical principles, so IT focusing, focuses on the technology supporting information systems. So remember, we said that the information systems were. Hold on, let me see, so. Okay, no, that was actually information technology, um, okay, so. Focuses on the technology supporting information systems and a response to the practical needs of the organization, so that's information technology. Okay, and then we have the history of IT timeline, yes honey? Okay, so then the history of IT timeline. And so nineteen forties, the Manchester Mark was one of the first ever stored program computers and written to search for Merceen primes, which a Merceen prime is a prime number that is one less than a power of two. And that was developed at the Victoria University and then in the nineteen fifties IBM sold four hundred and fifty of its first mass-produced computer in a year. And they use, and in the nineteen fifties, the computers then used magnetic data storage. Okay, and then nineteen fifty-eight, the first large-scale computer communications network Sage. Oh, okay, so the network Sage connected twenty-three computer sites in the US and Canada and that system was used to detect incoming Soviet bombers and direct interceptor aircraft to destroy them. That was actually a very interesting fact that I learned, that was actually very cool to learn about, um. These like first large-scale computer communications, cause to think that even like way back then that they were able to, to do that before the world wide web even actually technically existed. Um, okay, and then nineteen sixties, um. There was a computer, the DEC PDP one, hold on, let me see, because I don't think I. PDP one computer. Okay. So this is the first computer in. So it was one of the first computers um at the Massachusetts IT, I'm sorry, so it was one of the first computers at MIT and it says that it was an important computer for hackers. Um, I'm not really sure why, but it said that it only required one operator at the time and it retails for a hundred and twenty thousand. Nineteen sixty-eight. Data General in introduces the Nova Mini computers. So Nova computers were popular throughout the nineteen seventies and influenced many later systems. They had thirty-two kilobytes of memory and retailed for nine, nine point nine thousand dollars. And then nineteen seventy-one, Intel introduced the first microprocessor, the Intel four thousand four, which could perform up to ninety thousand operations per second. And in that same era, the first laser printer was launched by Xerox. And then, oh yes, so this is another interesting fact, which was in nineteen seventy-six, I had never known this literally before I started this class, I did not know that, I really only know, I only knew about Steve Jobs, but in nineteen seventy-six, Steve Wozniak co-founded Apple with Steve Jobs and they had an order for fifty assembled systems and in nineteen seventy-seven, the Apple II sold with a keyboard, a case. Remember those old school big old MacBooks? Cause I remember having some in my classes when I was in middle school and them computers were huge. They had the big, the big bags, they were huge. But they sold with a keyboard, a case, manual game paddles and a cassette tape containing the game breakout. Um, so yeah, like they were, they had fifty orders um for assembled computers back in nineteen seventy-six. And in nineteen seventy-eight, Atari launched the model four hundred and eight hundred. Computers. Let me see, hold on, let me just double check to make sure I took the right notes on that, hold on. Atari four hundred, okay, yeah, nope, it's so it is, I believe it's a. Okay, yeah, no, they were home computers, so yes. Yep, so that's right, so yeah, nineteen seventy-eight Atari launches the model four hundred and eight hundred computers. And, okay, so then in nineteen eighty, Microsoft operating system became the most licensed operating system, which is really cool, and then in nineteen eighty-one, Sony introduces the three and a half inch floppy disk, which if you are, if you're a millennial or earlier, you remember the floppy disk. Um, and then same era in the nineteen eighties, IBM launches the PC with an Intel eight eighty-eight microprocessor. And then in still in the early eighties, CD-ROMs are now able to hold five hundred and fifty megabytes of pre-recorded data and that is developed by Philips. And then in the same era in the nineteen eighties, I believe it was, yeah, it says by nineteen eighty-nine, Microsoft Word became the global processing standard, that's crazy. Bill Gates done had this joint on a chokehold since the eighties, love, since before I was born. This man done had the whole world in a chokehold when it came to. When it came to processing systems, cause love, I've been using Microsoft Word since the beginning of my time, literally, I've been using Microsoft Word since I was born and I'm thirty-five, I'm thirty-five, I've been using Microsoft Word since the beginning of time. So, um, okay, and then, um. So nineteen eighty-four, Apple launches Macintosh, so the mouse-driven computer has the G Y and a faster microprocessor. And then that same era in the early eighties, Compaq, C O M P A Q, I remember, I remember them, I haven't really heard much, yeah, you know what, that's actually very true, because when I was younger, Compaq was definitely, um, I think from what I remember, I still see a lot of, um, like memory cards that are made by Compaq, but I don't really see a lot of technology like how I used to, I don't see nearly as much technology created as Compaq, um, created by Compaq as I used to when I was younger. But they introduce in the nineteen eighties, they introduce the first um Compaq portable that can run the same software as an IBM PC. So they launched their own like portable computer. So first Compaq computer to use the new Intel chip, so that was in nineteen eighty-six and a thirty-two bit microprocessor with four million operations per second and a four kilobyte memory. So the memory is also increasing on these, um, oh, this is another fun fact that same thing, I don't know why, like I never, I just never knew that, like. Why didn't I ever, I don't know, I feel like I must have, I must have learned this when I was younger and I probably forgot. But in nineteen ninety, Tim Berns Lee invented the world wide web at CERN, so think about like just, um. Google CERN, that's it, just Google CERN and you'll understand, like. Yeah, so just Google CERN and CERN is the, it's the European Organization for Nuclear Research, okay? So Tim Lee Burns invented the world wide web at this organization for nuclear research, okay, in nineteen ninety. And initially, initially going, so basically initially any HTML webpage, they were normally intended for scientists to share data across the internet, so really they were creating HTML webpages initially just to be able to share information between scientists. And eventually, Tim Lee Burns ended up releasing the source code for free to make the web an open and democratic platform for everyone. The first webpage went live. The first webpage went live on August sixth nineteen ninety one. I would have been three years old. Like literally August sixth is my birthday, so I would have been three years old, um. At the time that the first webpage went live, the first HTML page ever. The first webpage that has HTTP in front of it, that's so cool, um. Okay, so then in nineteen ninety two. JPG creates a set of standards for digital images, JPG Joint Photographic Expert Group, so remember that. JPG is Joint Photographic Expert Group. JPG. JPG, Joint Photographic Expert Group JPG. And then in nineteen ninety three, the first browser for the web is created, which is Mosaic. And I'm not gonna lie to you, I don't recall. Mosaic, I don't, cause it says, um. Let me see browsers, so let me just look this up a bit, so. Yeah, so it says it's, it's a discontinued browser now. And that, yeah, it did release January twenty third of nineteen ninety three. But I don't ever recall using it, to be honest with you, and it looks like the final release, it was only out for about five years. Because the final release, it, it was created and, and released nineteen ninety three. And the final release was in nineteen ninety seven. So I'm not sure, like I said, it's still, it's been, it's since been discontinued, but. I think that final release was the final release, um. That was, yeah, so that was the first web browser. And, let me, yeah, and then ninety, and in nineteen ninety four. The Memory Storage Disk Compact Flash is introduced by SanDisk. In the same year Sony releases the PlayStation. And of course it becomes dominant in the home gaming market and that I do remember, because, um. Your girl was definitely playing, uh, Road Rage on the first PlayStation, okay? Um, so nineteen ninety seven. Text messaging becomes the norm and it's accelerated by the introduction of Nokia and BlackBerry. And if you remember having a BlackBerry. Those BlackBerrys were the joints, um, with the little trackball in the middle, the fact that on top of that, if y'all don't remember. Like when I was in college the first time, I used to write papers on my BlackBerry, you understand, like. The BlackBerry was the absolute most slept on phone, because, because it was like made for professionals. You could download all of your apps, all of the Microsoft suite you could download on your, on your BlackBerry. But, um, so text messaging becomes the norm. And it gets accelerated by the introduction of that, those Nokia phones and the BlackBerry, um. And then in the year two thousand camera phones are introduced. And USB flash drives are being introduced for store, for data storage and for backup. For two thousand, which I didn't know anything about, but Honda introduced a humanoid robot. So let me actually do a little bit of research on that, because I had no idea, but. Yeah, so it's a humanoid robot that's displayed in a museum in Japan. And, oh my goodness. Let me, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a picture, I'm gonna put a screenshot of this, that's so crazy, y'all. I'm, I'm gonna put a screenshot of this, I just screenshotted it on my computer, I'm gonna show it to you. It literally shaped like a person. That's crazy, um, I don't know why they even have these. These robots, so it says that it was an early experimental line of self-regulating humanoid walking robots. With wireless, with wireless movements created between nineteen eighty six and nineteen ninety three. And then it said in twenty eighteen Honda ceased the commercial development of Asimo. Although it will continue to be developed as a research platform and make public appearances. Okay, so now, so now they're just, they're just playing around with it, so they're not gonna sell it to any businesses. But they are gonna keep tampering around with it and messing around and playing around with this humanoid robot. Yes, alright, so. Year two thousand one iTunes is released for the Mac as the meteor player. As the main media player and management tool, so that was two thousand and one. Two thousand six, Amazon Web Services launches its cloud based services. I didn't even know, back in two thousand six, I was just graduating high school, I had no idea. Like, we were not even aware of cloud services back in two thousand six. So this was also an interesting fact to find out that these cloud services have actually been. Um, existing a lot longer than like maybe what I initially even thought about, like since two thousand six. They, they launched their first cloud based service. In twenty seven, the iPhone is released with the Apple Store apps. Android platform is now a thing, Amazon Kindle is now a thing, so all of these additional. Um, platforms and realize how. Once cloud services kind of. Um, started to release, it was then that it seems like we saw a huge explosion of. A lot more applications being deployed, being created and it's likely because of the ability to scale. Right, so cloud gives you the ability to really scale services and also to expand to other markets. Um, without having to spend all of the money of putting up servers and things like that in other markets. You can test other markets and enter other markets without all of the physical overhead. So you're realizing that I feel like there was a huge explosion in terms of the type of services. Um, being offered on these platforms once cloud came into the picture. So two thousand ten, the Apple iPad is released, um, okay. Twenty fourteen, Apple Pay is released, twenty fifteen, the Apple Watch is released. Okay, and because now we're getting into more recent times, twenty nineteen, the Oculus. Releases an Oculus Drift with an LCD and a camera. Okay, hmm, interesting. Okay, so here discussing the roles of the IT professional, so as new technologies and tools emerge. IT job titles and descriptions change, so. By category, we have the IT administrator, so the IT administrator is responsible for setting policies for the organization. So setting, yeah, so setting policies. Okay, so setting policies for organization access, security and protocols. And the protocols are connected to the network, so. When you're thinking of protocols, you're thinking of what is, what is. What is allowed and what isn't and what is allowed to be happening within the network. Because they are, when they're adminis- the way that they administer, they are an administrator for the network as a whole, so for the policies. That, um, that govern the network that they're using, but then also access to the network, security of the network. And protocols about what type of information can maybe be sent to the network and what can be extracted. Um, okay, so I think I understand that, and then the IT architect. Um, they are setting the strategy and the direction for the use of technology, they're defining technical standards. And design principles, so the architect is. Defining the technical standards and they are designing, I'm sorry, defining. The technical standards and design principles, so essentially the architect is like. It stands to reason that they function just like a building architect, so. They are defining the requirements, so they're setting the strategy. And direction for the use of the technology in the same way how an architect sets the strategy and use of tools. Um, and use of tools for the project that they're going to do. And then they're defining the technical standards and design principles and likewise the same thing with an architect. An architect is actually. Defining the standards for maybe what tools are going to be used, but then also. The design and layout for how everything is going to be used, okay? And then the IT engineer, they, they're implementing requirements and tasks. Help desk troubleshooting IT related issues. DevOps, development operations, so. This was actually maybe something that I wasn't to- totally clear on, cause I, when I was working in support. I knew was development operations, I just didn't know what they did. So it says here, based on the lesson that it brings together all other aspects of the IT group to resolve an issue. And, um, okay, so and then it's also, um, I have a note here. To research site reliability engineering. Because that can also kind of fall under. DevOps, so hold on, let me see. So site reliability. Engineer. And DevOps. You okay, baby? Okay, so DevOps, so yes, I researched site reliability engineering, because I realized that. They are a little bit similar, so. I wanted to grab that, okay, so the DevOps. It says is an approach to managing software development processes that collaborates between. Operations teams and development, so I guess that's kind of what I wrote, which is that. They're bringing together all of the other aspects of an IT group to resolve an issue. So brings together. All aspects of IT group to resolve an issue. Okay. And then we get into administration, so. System administrator, they are technical support for hardware and software issues for end users. The network administrator is responsible for designing, planning. Setting up and maintaining the org's what, the org's network, so a network administrator. Okay, so the network administrator is responsible for designing, planning, setting up, maintaining. The network, network troubleshooting and problem solving. And then the database administrator. Installing and configuring databases, fixing database errors and creating user accounts. And that's the database administrator, so installing, configuring, fixing and creating user accounts. Security administrator, installing, administering, troubleshooting network security issues. Web administrator, troubleshooting error messages encountered by internal users and. Tracking, analyzing, compiling web, website usage data. Okay. So. Web administrator, that's one thing that isn't as straightforward, so the web administrator. Isn't the same as like a web developer. Because a web administrator specifically is responsible for tracking, analyzing and compiling website usage data. So if you've ever, um, maybe heard stories or encountered anyone or had that experience yourself of being at work. And maybe like you try to, I don't know, you know, and it's not, and it doesn't have to be anything bad, it could literally be like. You clicked on something that took you to a website that, that got caught in a protocol and it's not letting, you know, it's not letting that. That webpage process, that would likely go to the web administrator and they would have access to that website usage data, right? So, and that website u- usage data is going back to, you know, your, your user, you know, your user. Um, account and your user account is likely, you know, maybe being. Maybe being managed by the system administrator, right, so. You know, contact the system administrator, they'll help you, you know, get all your logins and everything, but then all in the same. Sentence, the web administrator is also tracking all of your activity, um, on this company internet. So that's a web administrator, okay, so now the architects, the cloud architect is responsible for overseeing cloud computing systems. So that's a cloud architect. That type of position requires Unix, Linux and Windows. The network architect is responsible for designing networks and monitoring traffic. So installs routers, modems, upgrades hardware and software essential for network function. So the network architect is designing networks and monitoring traffic. And then they're installing the, the routers, the modems. And all that stuff to ensure that the network is functioning properly, that's the network architect. And then the automation architect is responsible for modernizing business processes. And that is the automation architect, cybersecurity architect. Is responsible, hold on, cause I didn't think I highlighted this, so cybersecurity. They're responsible for designing, building, testing and implementing security systems. Cybersecurity, so responsible for designing, building, testing and implementing. Security systems within. The organization's IT network, okay, so cybersecurity architect. Their responsibility is to design, build, test and implement security systems. Within the organization's IT network, which means you are anticipating. Possible network security breaches. As well as. Testing for possible breaches and implementing. Different systems within. An organization's IT network to ensure that there are no breaches, so that's cybersecurity. Okay, and then, and then engineering, so machine learning engineer. They are responsible for allowing organization to take full control of its data. So with data analytics. Okay, so they're responsible for allowing organization to take full control of their data, so hold on. That's not really, I don't feel like that's a good. Machine learning engineer. Okay, so I guess, yeah, I could write a def- a better definition of this, so really, a machine learning engineer. They are researching, building and designing the artificial intelligence. Responsible for machine learning and maintaining and improving existing artificial intelligence systems. So let me see, okay. So I'm gonna just write this down, so. They are members of the data science team. Okay, so. They are part of the data science team, um, and responsible for researching. Okay, so basically, a machine learning engineer is a member of the data science team and they're responsible for researching, building. And design, uh, researching, building, maintaining and designing AI systems. Um, as well as maintaining and improving them. Okay, and then the software engineer. Designing and developing software that makes. Software and hardware work, including operating systems, database systems and embedded systems, so. The network engineer, um, they set up, configure and maintain systems where data resides. So they're setting up, configuring, maintaining and upgrading systems where the data resides. Okay, and then the cloud, so I guess I'm not really gonna go through these much, because I don't think. These really require that much study, so this section is really just going over the different types of positions. Um, within IT, so these I don't really, really need to go over, um, I think I'm pretty familiar with. What they do, I think this goes over more like the positions, but then also like what. The requirements are to get into the positions and some of what they do, um. So actually I'll go through a few more. Um, okay, so like the cloud engineer, they support and identify opportunities to migrate infrastructure to cloud. So setting up the automation, the cloud storage, servers, data centers and web services. With an emphasis on solution cost, user benefit and security of data. So setting up automation, cloud storage, servers, so like EC two instances. If you're working at AWS, right, maybe they might be giving people access. To these services, creating additional, um, EC two instances or buckets to hold additional data. For theirs, for whoever. For theirs, for whoever might be using the cloud services. Um, so yeah, then it goes through technical support, systems analyst, so technical support is pretty much monitoring and maintaining. Technology responding to users for help, so that we kind of have an idea of the systems analyst. They, so I feel like the analyst positions are all the way around, usually taking data. And um, eh eh applying that into whatever business issues they might be having to forecast. So systems analysts, they're investigating business problems and creating information systems to provide solutions. Um, the data analysts, they're using statistical and quantitative method methods. To gain insights that support org decision making, so. Gaining insights, which is basically forecasting. The security analysts, they're monitoring the network for security breaches, cybersecurity. Keeping information systems safe, secure, ensuring integrity, confidentiality and availability. Um, technical consultant, they are basically contractors. That are hired by a third party, um, that are hired by a third party for external clients. And the project manager, they're organizing people, time and other resources to ensure project meet requirements. Okay. Next section, okay, so. Cause you know, I'm a mama, so I'm I'm here studying with my kids, y'all. So. You're gonna be here with me for a bit, cause I have my OA tomorrow. Um. And I plan on passing this baby on the first track, so let's get to it. So data, information and information system, so relying on the scientific methods and approaches that give us a reasonable view. That valuable insights may be revealed, so this section is. Showing the data pyramid, which essentially breaks. Inf- it breaks it down into the stages of data, so information is defined as um. Is defined in terms of data, information, knowledge and wisdom. So information being the collection of processed data from a variety of sources, so data can include raw facts. Um, and information can be inferred once data is organized, so. Data is the absolute raw information that is being collected, then it is input. And then, you know, I guess from a human standpoint, we're getting input. It's going inside our brains, we're processing it and then we are inferring based on, we're inferring. Um, based on the processing, but then also as we're inferring based on our experience. Then it goes from data, you know, information to knowledge to wisdom. Because now you're applying your experiences to the information, so. Basically, after the data, including raw facts, the information can be inferred once the data is organized, so knowledge. Is a dynamic combination of experience, values, contextual information. Expert insight and grounded intuition that provides an environment and framework for evaluating. And incorporating new experiences and information, so wisdom. Is literally um, being able to apply your own experiences and tuition. And your intuition and values on raw facts that you have processed. Um, or on raw facts that have been processed and inferred upon. Then you are applying your knowledge to it, which is your understanding based on your life experience. And your views, your values. And then wisdom is stating the path to connected understanding when interpreting data. So wisdom is the human element leveraging an intelligent. Technology component when attempting to make fact based decisions. I kind of understand. Because the last part is wisdom. That's the thing, the last part is wisdom, so it's data, so the way that the pyramid goes, it's it's a pyramid and then on the bottom it's data. I'm gonna, I'll probably actually see if I can um, take a picture of it and add it here, but it's a triangle. On the bottom is data and then it's information and then it's knowledge and then it's wisdom, so data is the raw facts. That is unprocessed data, and then when it gets input to, you know, where it's gonna be processed. So to a human is gonna be put into our brain, we're gonna process it, then it becomes information. Once we are ha- once we have inferred on the information, so we process the information. And we're and we um, and we're coming to some sort of conclusion based on the input. Um, then we arrive at knowledge and knowledge is still the level where. It's the combination of experiences, values and intuition. You know, that helps you evaluate information and that brings you to knowledge. But the wisdom part, I'm not gonna lie to you, I'm not, I'm not totally, totally understanding like. The. Explanation. Yeah, maybe that's what it is, I don't really understand the explanation. Because like when it says connectedness, like I don't understand. Because basically, like on the other end of it, it's saying data is raw facts, information is understanding. The relation, so being able to make, to to relate. What you're hearing, what you're processing to potentially other experiences that you've had. Knowledge is understanding patterns, right, so. Now you're getting to the point of knowledge where, yeah, same thing, like you're seeing patterns and therefore you can start making. You know, coming to a conclusion based on the patterns that you see. As well as evaluating that against the information that you've gotten, but then when it says wisdom, it says understanding principles. And it's like, well, what principles? Right, like what principles? Okay, well. I might do a little bit more research on that, but I mean, I don't think anyone knows what wisdom is, so like I understand, I'm gonna take the the definition for what it is. Um, in that it says to understand principles, so I guess my my. My thought would be that after knowledge, after applying the patterns, after applying your own personal experience. On top of the information that you've now processed, now implementing the wisdom into it is. Understanding the principles of what it is that you're doing, so I guess applying the principles. Of information technology or the principles of. What? Yeah, I guess, right, the principles of the system you're working on or the network you're working on, I don't know, um, but okay. So from there, okay, so. Okay, so now we're gonna do flipped pyramid, so here. We're gathering the data on the customer purchasing habits, data is stored in data centers or in the cloud. Okay, and then this information can be used to figure out how customers behave. And big data and data science look into the future and discover connections that we might not have imagined existed. So the flipped pyramid is essentially gathering data on the customer habits. And it's stored in data centers and then this can also be used. To determine consumer behavior. Um, those data insights can be can be used to prophesize, um. And determine future consumer behavior. That's big data and data science. So structure and inch and unstructured and unstructured data, so most of the data stored today are unstructured. Unstructured data consists of blogs, tweets, audio, so essentially. These are all types of data that are not structured in a way um, that allows for easy analysis, so structured data is coded in a way. That converts easily to be analyzed such as. Contact information, names, emails, addresses, phone numbers. Quantitative fields like birthdays and transactions, so those are considered structured data, whereas unstructured. Are like blogs, tweets, uh, maybe social media posts. Um, but I guess even still, like, you know, they'd still be able to be analyzed, you know, if there's a date on it or something, so. I guess even still, with data being stored as unstructured, there's still a way. To be able to convert it, but it's just, yeah, likely even still some of the content may not be able to be converted. So big data develops analytical tools to study unstructured data. Okay, so big data, so companies like Amazon and Netflix use big data to analyze cus- customer experience. Model customers and align products to consumer characteristics, so IE. Prophesizing their behavior and um, directing. Either consumers to certain products or or monitoring consumer behavior and gearing um. And gearing products towards consumer based on the data that they're getting from customer experience. And things like that, they're aligning products to particular customers, maybe based on their past experience or something like that. Okay, so then information systems, so the information systems are collections of data and information used to support decision making. In organizations, so. Data management. So data management is the strategic resource for organizations that informs operations. And provides insights, so data management. Is a resource for organizations that informs operations and provides insight. So a significant portion of collected data may be sensitive and personal data. Personal data is consider is um, also called PII, which is, let me double check too, so I can. Personal, so PII stands for personal identifiable information, um. So the infrastructure used to manage data in an organization is referred to as the data architecture, so. Infrastructure. Architecture, so that's something, I feel like that's a key word that I'm gonna keep in the back of my head. Because it really helps me relate back to like what the architect type of roles do. Um, when it comes to architect, architect infrastructure, they handle the infrastructure. So the infrastructure used to manage data in an organization is referred to as the data architecture. Flexible architecture supports changes that allow for both data collection and analysis. So data connection, collection and analysis, not just one or the other. So and data can reside either in-house or in the cloud. And we can either own the infrastructure that stores our data or we can share resources with another company. So. There are three core variations of cloud based sys- cloud based systems. So IAAS, which is infrastructure as a service, um, and that. Allows you to access a virtualized environment and computing resources composed of virtualized hardware. So think, um, instead of having a whole entire server room. You have a whole bunch of virtual servers on Amazon on, bleh. You have a whole bunch of virtual servers on Amazon um, cloud services. So infrastructure as a service gives you the what would have normally been a physical infrastructure. But now in the form of a service, so now you can, you don't have to have all of the servers to again, to extend to other markets. Now you can just, you know, get a cloud server and. Purchase them particularly in, you know, possibly in different markets, and now you have coverage across multiple markets. The second one is platform as a service. So platform as a service is a platform that supports the development and management of web applications. So platform as a service could be something like Shopify. Um, something like WordPress, right, so. This platform is supports the development and management of web applications, so in that case with Shopify. Um, it allows you, it is a platform that allows you to manage your website, manage a whole entire e-commerce store. Um, and it allows you the platform to do that, and so it reduces the infrastructure requirement, right? Since a lot of the processing is already happening behind the scenes, it reduces a lot of the infrastructure requirement. Because now all you have to do is go there, you know, drag and drop and then everything is done on the backend for you as far as hosting your website and whatever else. And then software as a service, so software as a service. Hold on, but where did I even? Okay, so software as a service um, would be essentially, um. Allowing users to connect and use um, cloud based apps over the internet, so. I worked for a SaaS company and essentially, um, this, they had an application. So, um, another example of SaaS is Netflix, so think about Netflix. Netflix is a software as a service because this is an application, right? That sells you um, the access to their software. And once you access their software, you're able to watch videos on demand. But again, the per- the point is, is that they have an application. And they're selling you access to that software and to that application, so that is considered as software as a service. Okay, I'm gonna go and change my battery out, I'll be right back. Okay, so next portion is data sources, so. To begin analyzing business processes, a business must collect data from multiple platforms and pro- portals. So the data can come from various avenues, sales, marketing, finance, customer service, relationship management, so yes, essentially. Um, the data sources, it kind of just describes like for in in terms of an organization. Where would the organization be getting data from, and what they're saying is that organization can get data from various mul- you know, multiple different avenues. So not just from one department, but from all different angles, and this information has to be able to be organized in order to be able to be analyzed. So companies store data in systems like CRMs, which is a customer relationship manager. And an ERP, which is an enterprise resource planning tool, as well as other customer applications. And then the data quality, so the data quality, bad data costs companies money. So good data enables companies to analyze the current state of financials. Increase revenue through better customer product marketing, uh, targeting, cause we talked about that. In the, I believe it was the, the last section regarding. And and analyst, right, one of those analyst positions, which is that they are increasing revenue through. Customer product targeting and um, big data and data analysis allows them to be able to do that, to be able to. Pull customer insights and be able to better align products to their customers as well as forecast consumer behavior based on data. Um, so develop new automated processing processes and reducing demands on labor. That's the only thing though, because the more and more like I'm in my class and I'm just like, I've been seeing this as a constant. I I've been seeing the the pattern of essentially technology being used to reduce demands on labor. And that's the only thing that like, I love software engineering, but I hate the fact that it's kind of like in a way. We're working with technology, but then all in the same sentence, it's like all of these things are reducing demands on labor and if we need labor, like. It will it come to a point where we don't need human labor and like what's gonna happen as a result, you know? Cause like I would wanna develop new automated processes that maybe don't reduce demands on labor, but maybe, you know. Increase productivity, right, and maybe make it to where we can get more done with the same amount of labor? I don't know, I want I want my my work to go to good, I want my work to support humanity, you know what I mean? So when I see stuff like this, I'm like. I wanna do my work to where it doesn't reduce the demands on labor, I want it to be where it's like, it's sustainable. A company can make money, but also we're going to support humans, we're going to make sure that they have jobs. And that they are valued and that they can continue making a living for themselves. And that they are valued and that they can continue making a living for themselves. But okay, and then gather competitive information to stay ahead of competitors. And um exploit changes in information to generate insights from diverse data sources to widen the competitive gap, so. All of those things around business and data quality. So data hygiene, it refers to the processes that ensures the cleanliness of data. So dirty data is caused by duplicate records, incomplete or outdated data incorrectly stored and managed data. Data scrubbing is the process of removing or amending. Bad data, so and I can see how that can be an issue, because I know even at my last job, a lot of the duplicates in the system. Would otherwise cost um, you know, having to fix those issues would only. Increase labor costs, right, if it's something where it's like, oh, there's just a duplicate in the system and that's. What's causing, you know, this issue for this, you know, this user who, you know, who maybe might be a valuable user, right, but. Because they are um, but because they have duplicate data in the system, it's making it either. Difficult for them to use the system, or it's, you know, making it difficult for the system to support the user. So hygiene, so it's caused by duplicate records, incomplete outdated data. Now the scrubbing is the process of removing or amending bad data. The quality data attributes defined as data that is precise, valid, reliable and complete. So precision describes how precise the data is in context of its intended use. So quality data is complete and thorough, providing a full view of the relevant picture. Okay, so now we go into computer systems, so. The computer systems, a system that consists of hardware and software components that work together to store, retrieve and process data. So computer systems store, retrieve and process data. And it consists of hardware and software components that work together to store, retrieve and process data. Okay, so computer systems. A system that consists of hardware and software components that help retrieve, that help. Store, retrieve and process data, okay. So they store data, they direct traffic on the internet, collect data and analyze survey results, so the con-. The functions of a computer system, so this is what I remember. That this is the main thing that I that I always have in my head to the IPO or the IPOS, so the IPO. Is input processing output, IPOS is input processing output storage. And those are the main, those are the four main functions of a computer system. Okay, so I just reviewed IPOS, so with that. The system divides the work into three categories, so. One category is the input requirement from the environment, so. Input data, so whether it's we're typing something into the computer. Um we are trying to install something into the computer, we are inputting it. And the processing is the computation based on the requirement or process. The output is the provision for the requirement, so essentially the output is the result. Um the result of whatever your input is. So the people, most important element of a computer system are its users. Um they refer to them as liveware, and the end-users operate the system for different purposes. Okay, so now we're gonna go into the core anatomy of a computer, so input devices. The input devices bring information into the processor, so. Input devices would also um consist of a mouse. A keyboard or a microphone, so anything that you can plug in that is normally external to your system. That you can plug into your computer would be considered as an input device. The processing device is the CPU, the CPU is the central processing unit. And this is where the information gets processed, the CPU is located inside the motherboard in our computer. And that is what does all of the processing of the information from our input. And then the storage devices would be the RAM or the hard disk, so the RAM is a random access memory. This consists of the computer short-term memory, so where the data that is that is currently being processed. Is stored, so when you're actively using your computer and it's saving where you are or it's saving. Your most recent um activity, that is your RAM, your random access memory. That is running, when you have multiple tabs open on your computer, that is your random access memory that is running. Your hard disk is the data storage device that stores and retrieves digital data using the magnetic storage. Okay, and then the output devices would be considered as monitors, speakers or printers, so essentially. Um the output devices is the result of the processing, so. Maybe you plugged in something into your computer and now you're playing music, so now the music is playing out of the speakers. If you are typing something onto Microsoft Word, the the input would be you typing, the output would be on your monitor. Um likewise for the printer, so the printer would be considered as an output device, because that would be where. The input is be is exiting out of, um. So, okay, so the compute, the components of a computer system. So the components that share software and data between elements of a computer system are known as middleware. Yeah, so it's it's a component that shares software and data between elements of a computer system. Oh tangible components like monitors, mice, phones are examples of computer hardware. The components of a customer system that specify how data is transformed. Per user comprise the computer software. Okay, so the hardware, the motherboard is at the center of what makes a computer work. So like I talked about the CPU being located in the motherboard. The CPU serves as the brain of the system, which allocates resources within the other components of the computer. So I E like everything is being processed through the CPU, and then after that it's directing. Um you know, like where it should go, so if it's supposed to go to the hard drive, it's supposed to go to the hard disk, if it's running on the random access memory. Um if it's supposed to be input, if it's supposed to be output, all of that stuff is being dictated by the CPU, which is the brain of the computer. Which is, yeah, the brain of the computer, and the motherboard is at the center of that that houses all of. The um the memory slots, the random access memory, the hard drive, all of those different components are all housed in the motherboard. So software, software programs run on the computer providing instructions, telling the computer what to do, so we already know. That's kind of, you know, how, yeah, that's how programming works, but in terms of this, software programs. They run on the computer and tell the computer what to do. The networks, the systems of software and hardware components. That connect two or more devices for the purpose of sharing data and information, that is a network, so the network. Is a system of software and hardware components. That are connecting two or more devices for the purpose of sharing data and information, okay? Software and hardware components connecting two or more devices. Now, there are two common networks. So these were other things that I was not quite familiar with that I needed, because again, it's like you hear the stuff. But a lot of too, what I'm realizing is that the terminology is important too, because. That's a lot of some of the things that I would get tripped up on. Essentially, when I'd be at work, I just wouldn't know what they were talking about, because they would say it in abbreviation and maybe I just didn't know, you know what I mean, I had my own name for it. So the two common networks are LAN, which is the L A N, and I'm sorry, LAN. L A N and WAN, W A N, so the LAN network is is um. The abbreviation is L A N, it stands for local area network, and so the local area network provides connections for devices within the same network. WAN, the internet. Is the world's largest public area network. So WAN stands for wide area network, and essentially wide area network is available to everybody. Whereas LAN, the local area network would either be within your home network. Or likely within some sort of organization, because it's localized, and that network is only available. You know, maybe for particular locations and or for particular users. So the two types of network designs are client-server and peer-to-peer. So the client servers are servers on one side permitting access to specific resources. Based on parameters, so. An example for client server, um. Okay, so let me see, I'm gonna find an example for client server. Um okay, so an example for the client server would be emails, network printing. And the web, so. You're sending, so the client is sending a request to the server and the server is sending information back. So client servers are on the one side permitting access to something else, um. Okay, so that's something to keep in mind, the client servers is permitting access to somewhere else. So whenever you hear client server, I guess you have to think about it like. Client is sending something to server, server has to approve or deny, server makes the ultimate decision of what to send back to the client. Peer-to-peer is all the devices support the same functions and have access to the same resources without a server. So peer-to-peer is I don't have to request anything from a server, I have access just like everybody else has access. And we don't have to, um, I don't have to request access, you know, from a server in order to be able to get through. Wherever it is that I'm trying to go. So client server. Okay, alright, so now physical topology, so designing a network is drawn out using logical. Or physical perspective, physical topology is the actual layout of how systems are placed in the network. So and it refers to how devices are connected to the network. So the logical topology, it indicates how the data will flow considering load balancing, normal traffic. Network backup and replication of data. And the languages supporting data exchange between computers are referred to as protocols, okay? So the protocols are within the networks, and the protocols essentially. Support the data exchange between computers. Networks may support different protocols, the most popular is TCP IP. And are commonly found on the internet and in in-home networks, so network operating systems and other software applications. Generate network traffic and enable users to complete tasks. Okay, so now let me just double check TCP IP. Oh, okay, but the TCP stands for Transmission Control Protocol. So we have computer history. So yeah, another interesting tidbit, so the Tim's. So Tim Berns-Lee, the the inventor of the World Wide Web. He proposed a system where documents stored on computers throughout the internet could be linked together. Creating a system of linked information, and that's how we got WWW. So history of the computer, so here it goes through. Basically, the first and second generation computers, so the first ones. So the first and second generation of computers were. Um they relied on machine languages, the lowest level programming languages understood by computers. They consumed a lot of electricity and they were expensive, um as well as only running one programming, one program at a time. Um so the example given were like vacuum tubes that used to be used. Um and something called the ENIAC, which was from nineteen forty-six and it used vacuum tubes for circuitry. And magnetic drums for memory. And so in the nineteen fifties to the early nineteen sixties. They replaced vacuum tubes with transistors. And so now it was tapes and discs being used for storage purposes. And over one hundred computer programming languages were developed to work with second generation computers. So um examples of that were Fortran and Cobol. I've heard of those, I've never even so much as looked at them, but I have heard of them. Okay, so third and fourth generation computers, so integrated circuits, so now this, now we're getting into the third generation. And the third generation are the invention of integrated circuits, um so. Enabling the development of computers that were faster, cheaper and more reliable. So the third generation computers, they use keyboards and monitors that computed with other. That communicated with other components of the software and hardware systems. And the integrated circuits, they increased the computing power. Um however, they were complicated to manufacture, difficult to maintain and required air conditioning to keep the computers cool enough to run. Now getting into the fourth generation, fourth generation. Saw a reduction in processing size. Um they saw the development of G Y, the mouse and handheld devices. So fourth generation, we're getting into the more powerful like devices, but in more s- in smaller packaging. So now we're getting more power and less space. And now we're into the fifth generation, so fifth generation is artificial intelligence, quantum computing, so. It's crazy, because I never even realized this too, that when they talk about for the generation AI. This has started since the nineteen eighties, so they talk, so in my notes. Um basically, fifth generation computers will support the development of AI. Natural language processing using the principles of robotics, neural network, expert system. And natural language understanding, so fifth generation computing devices are going to be capable of learning on their own. Um so then we get into quantum computing. Which is the study of a non-classical model of computation, so it's more efficient than modern computing. Through the use of quantum tunneling, which that was also something that I wanted to do some research on, because what is that? Quantum tunneling, okay, let's see, okay, so. I just researched this, and it says that quantum tunneling is defined as a quantum mechanical process where wave functions. Can penetrate through a potential barrier. What? It says the transmission through the potential barrier can be finite and relies exponentially on the barrier width and the barrier height. But the fact that quantum tunneling is literally like we're getting to a place where. Y'all, it's looking like we might be able to time travel and walk through other dimensions relatively soon, because. I mean, but then again, I guess they didn't specify whether or not they could, they could penetrate through a potential barrier of matter. I guess, but it's sounding like we're gonna be able to walk through multiple dimensions very soon. Um with this quantum tunneling, um so. More efficient than mo- modern computing, and so they're saying that they're gonna be using quantum tunneling for quantum computing. Because it's literally more efficient and faster than modern computing. So quantum computers are expected to reduce power consumption from one hundred to one thousand X. And will allow computing to surpass any limits of traditional computing. And again, I can probably understand if if experiments are being done like with. Wave lengths, um. Because that's really quite fascinating, um, okay. So nanotechnology, nanotechnology and the molecular manufacturing involves the use of nano-scale tools. And non-biological processes to build structures, devices and systems at the molecular level. So that's another thing that is actively being created. And we are in the midst of developing technology, we are in the midst and the cusp. Of like life-changing technology, because we are in the fifth generation of technology right now. And it is considered emerging, so this is not over yet, we are in the cusp of it. And nanotechnology is kind of at the forefront of that, because I know like. You know, with vaccines and things like that, like I've heard a lot about nanotechnology, right, like from the chip that. You know, Elon talked about, I'm pretty sure the Neuralink, right? So you're talking about there's so many different ways that nanotechnology are being implemented into our lives, that it's it's. It's also very fascinating to know like the capabilities of nanotechnology. Nanotechnology can utilize non-biological processes, so it can use nano-scale tools that are non-biological. To build structures and. use nano scale tools that are non-biological to build structures and devices on a molecular level. Uh, was something else that I happened to stumble across where it talks about um mechanosynthesis. And mechanosynthesis, it states is a process where mechanical tools are used to manipulate atoms and molecules constructing devices and materials. With atomic precision. And molecular mechanical systems operating under programmed instructions. Would bring together a single molecule or atom with another bonding them together in a directed and orderly fashion. So nanotechnology can be meticulously programmed to create edit, bond together on a molecular and atomic level. Like again, we're living through a fascinating time. So I that that's why I like Loki, I'm all, I'm like, I love this program because I'm like, actually, this is really interesting. I have a lot of questions about what I'm seeing. You know, in the world, you know what I mean? And so it's kind of like, it's nice that it's like I'm in school. And essentially some of the questions that I had been asking to myself. Or just being like, that's crazy and what about this and what about that? I'm learning in, you know, I've like kind of started to touch on in this class. So it's been interesting. Um, okay, so now the introduction to computer hardware. So we have the CPU. The CPU processes all the information from programs run by your computer. Processing speed is measured in gigahertz. The RAM, the RAM is the random access memory. So that is found in the memory slots in the motherboard. The RAM temporarily stores information created by programs in a way that makes the data easily accessible. So temporarily stored um, created by programs. So essentially it's the equivalent of when you have a whole bunch of multiple tabs open, your RAM memory has to be um, has to be good, right? If you want to maybe have your computer and be able to have, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty tabs open in your computer not crash. That's the RAM memory that is, that is storing that temporary information. With all those tabs up and it's still able to process whatever it is that you're completing within those eighteen, you know, twenty-five tabs. It's the random access memory that allows you to do some of that. And then the hard drive, which is the storage device responsible for storing permanent and temporary data. So the hard drive are the apps that you're installing on your computer. Um, the audio, you know, so some of those things that are not in a temporary um, in in your cache or in a temporary um, data storage area. So, okay, so hard drive, so it's saved on your computer. There are two different types of storage devices. So one is the traditional hard disk and then and the other one is the solid state drive, which is an SSD. Um, so now we going into the graphics processor unit. So the graphics processor unit, it processes huge batches of graphic data. So there are dedicated graphic cards that interface with the motherboard. Uh, um, via an expansion slot to work exclusively on graphic rendering. So there are expansion slots that you can use air quality or better quality graphic cards. And you can actually put them into the expansion slot and those are going to help with gr- rendering the graphics potentially at a higher quality. The modern GPUs fulfill a broad computational workload beyond just rendering. So making them in a true extension to the CPU. Now the expansion card. The printed circuit board that can be inserted into an electrical connector um, is to add functionality. So you can also add expansion cards and you can utilize expansion cards in the expansion slot on the computer motherboard. And you can utilize those to add additional functionality to your computer system via the expansion bus. And the expansion bus are other locations within within the system. So the expansion bus is a computer bus that moves information between the internal hardware of a computer system and the peripheral devices. So a collection of wires and protocols that allow for the expansion of a computer. And likewise, the expansion bus, when they talk about it moves information between the internal hardware of a computer system and peripheral devices. Um, an example of this would be a USB. So a USB being able to move information, let's say you have something stored on the documents of your computer. You can move that information from the documents file onto your USB. And that is considered um, an expansion, in in expansion bus. So the components of computer hardware, the cache memory is the smallest amount of memory. It's also known as the SRAM. So this one is static random access memory. And then there's another one called DRAM, which is the dynamic random access memory. The DRAM stores data within a session, but once the device powers off, all data is released. So that is the most temporary where it's just staring storing data just within that session and then it's getting deleted once your system turns off. So the CPU consists of three parts. So the L, the ALU, which is the arithmetic logic unit. So this one contains the circuitry that performs operations on data. So that's so and these are three parts of the CPU. So the the arithmetic logic unit, which performs the operation on data. And then it has the control unit. This one is coordinating the machines activities. And then the process registers, which essentially contain data storage cells called registers. And it serves as a temporary holding place for data being manipulated by the CPU. So essentially, before the instructions go all the way out and the data goes to its final, to its final destination, it goes through the registers first. So the CPU processes it. It goes into the register and from the register. So basically it says here that it holds the input to the ALU and it stores results. So it's holding the input from the ALU and then the CPU is then, you know, processing it. If it's performing an operation, then the ALU is processing it. And then from there, it's gonna store the results and then it's going to send it to wherever it needs to go based on the system commands. And those are the process registers. That, so this is the control unit. So the control unit, it transfers data from the main memory to the registers. It informs the ALU which registers contain the data. And it activates the ALU and tells it which register should receive the results. Okay, and that's the control unit. And so then we have different types of registers. So keep in mind that the register is receiving the input, right? So once the CPU, which is the central processing unit, is about to process something in your computer, it's receiving the input. And then the CPU is processing and then it gets the result. From there, once it gets the result. Then the control unit sends the instructions to the ALU to say, okay, now that you have the results. This is where we need it. We need it to go back into Microsoft Word. We need, we needed to go back to the calculator. We needed to go back here. We needed to go back to the printer. Um, that's the final, you know, that's where the result needs to be sent. So essentially the control unit dictates um, where the ALU is actually going to be sending this result. Yeah, and basically it tells it where it's gonna be sending the result and which register is going to send it to. And so now we're gonna break down the types of registers. So the types of registers are memory. So the first one is MAR, memory address register. It holds the memory location of the data that needs to be accessed. The MDR is the memory data register. This holds the data that is being transferred to or from the memory. So the memory address register tells you the location of the data. The memory data tells you the data that is being transferred. So it's actually holding the data. The memory address is holding the location of the data. The accumulator is holding the ALU results. So the ALU results are the what is it? The arithmetic logic unit. So the results from the input and while it's being processed. The accumulator is holding those results and then from there it's sending it to the control unit, from the control unit, then it's sending it to the registers. And from the registers, then it's sending it off to the program. And then program counter holds the address of the next program instruction to be executed. Okay. So current instruction register. So it's holding the current instruction during processing. And then we have the ROM, which is the read-only memory. So the component that stores instructions for crucial system activities, including booting up a system. Initializing different component components. So read-only memory is a ROM. So now the buses. So remember they talked about the buses, which the buses um, helped connect. I believe it was the software to peripheral devices. The peripheral devices consist of any device that can be plugged in externally um, into your computer to where now you can transfer data between your computer and this external device. So that's what a peripheral device would be consisted of. So it says the buses, they serve as electrical roadways transmitting information between the CPU and other components. So the instructions are sent through the bus lines to the CPU and include how to process the data and which component to use. So three types of buses. The address bus, which is the destination address where the data assigned is gonna be processed. The data bus, this carries the data between the processor, memory unit and the input and output devices. Um, the control bus carries the commands from the CPU and controls and coordinates all activities. Hi, my kids are just about to go to bed, so I missed, um I I was kind of studying off camera, so I'm just gonna pick up where I left off. Network hardware. So going through transmission media, both wired and wireless networks require network media to transfer data. Wired networks use twisted pair cables, coaxial cables and optical fiber cables. And I said I was interested um in understanding how a fiber optical cable worked. I'm sorry, how does the fiber optical cable actually transmit data? Okay, yeah, so that's what I'm looking for. Okay, so basically fiber optical cables transmit data by fast traveling pulses of light. So a layer of glass is wrapped around the central fiber and causes light to repeatedly bounce off the walls of the cable, enabling the signal to go further. But I kind of wanna understand further, like how does that actually happen? It's light rather than electrical signals to transmit data. So fiber optic cable speed is as fast or as or it's close to the speed of light. And they have a broader range of frequencies because the data travels at the speed of light. It has a broader range of frequencies. That's interesting. And because of that, fiber connections are less likely to be affected by power outages because of the fact that the data travels at the speed of light and because it uses light rather than electrical signals. So that's something to keep in mind. Okay, so wireless networks use radio waves. So wireless networks use radio waves, microwaves and infrared waves. The common types of twisted pair of cables are unshielded twisted pair, which are UTPs. And shielded twisted pair, which are STPs. And the STP cables consist of two separately insulated copper wires wound around each other. So the network bandwidth is typically measured in megabits per second and gigabits per second. So the MBPS and the GBPS. And the coaxial cables, so those ones have an outer plastic that is using computer networks to deli- to deliver cable TV. So the the wires that have like the little pins in the middle of them, those are coaxial cables. And they're generally used to deliver cable TV. Base band is a signal at a narrow frequency range. Where data or information is superimposed then transmitted. So think ethernet serial cables and coaxial cables where these cables transmit data from one place to another. And it is very narrow, so it only has one direction that it can go. And in the broadband is high capacity transmission technologies that are used to transmit data, voice, video across long distances. So think high-speed cable, coaxial cables, radio waves and fiber optic cables. That can transmit data over long distances rather than um rather than a personal device like wireless headphones or Bluetooth headphones. Broadband is able to transmit data across long distances and high speeds. Well, the fiber optic cable, so that's what I was looking at. So the fiber optic cable, it says that it transmits large volumes of data using the concept of reflection of light through a core made of glass or plastic. So the fiber transmits data by light to a receiving end where the light signal is decoded as data. So and it can transmit large volumes of data. So not only is it um more technically more reliable than uh, any sort of data model that uses electricity because this is the only one that uses light. And light would always be available even if electricity is not. So that would also be like in the event of an outage or something like that, if there was an option to use a technology source that can move data. Fiber optics would be at the top of the list.